So, welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedules and lives to join us tonight for this virtual community meeting on the draft housing element. We're really happy and excited to see you here. So, the purpose of this community meeting is to provide you with a brief overview of the draft housing element, which has been out for public review for a couple of weeks now. Answer questions and then just take comments and have just an open discussion about housing and your ideas and thoughts about the draft element. With that, I'm going to launch into a PowerPoint presentation. And it'll just, we'll just briefly kind of go over the draft housing element. And we'll have some activities in there as well, so you don't get too worried. So, one moment, I'm going to share my screen. Can I get a thumbs up if you guys can see? This would be awesome. Okay, perfect. So, many of you know that we started this work about a year ago when we hired Raincon consultants to head up this update to the housing element, climate action plan, safety element, and then to prepare an environmental justice element for the city of Hayward. Tonight, I'm joined by Jason Montague, Sarah Howland, and Andrea Sanchez from the Raincon team. And they've been instrumental in developing a creative, holistic, and very compliant housing element. Andreas is going to be providing Spanish translation in the comments box. So, if you would like to provide a comment or a question in Spanish, please direct it to the comments and Andreas will get in touch with you directly. In addition, we are going to be I'll let you, okay. In addition, there is subtitles happening at the top of the screen. So, hopefully, people can read that and it's not butchering, planning lingo too much, so. So, one of the social media themes that we'd use throughout this process, and some of you probably provided responses, is we were asking people to give us three words that describe their living situation, their home, their family, whatever means home to you. And then we received varied, complex, and really beautiful responses to those questions. We want to continue to build on that theme tonight. So, if you could please take a moment, just during this presentation, you don't have to do it right now, but to drop your three words into the chat. And then our consultant will prepare a word cloud that we'll share at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. So, we're also going to launch a short poll to get to know the, to get to know the folks in the room. I don't know what's, and so, prior to doing that, I'm going to have Sarah, Helen from Raincon, give a brief recap on Zoom, so we all know that, how to use the tool. And maybe she can help me figure out how to get this thing that's covering our subtitles off my screen.
All right. Hi, everyone. So, we are using Zoom and don't assume that everyone knows how to use Zoom, even though we've been a couple of years into the COVID pandemic. Want to give a, just a little reminder of the fact that there is a toolbar at the bottom of your screen, and it provides many helpful tools to allow some participation and experience more information about this process. So, first, you are on the left-hand side, you're able to use the microphone icon to mute or unmute your microphone. You are also able to click to turn your video on or off. We will be using most of those tools during the discussion time period. However, you're able to do so beforehand, we just ask that you raise your hand, which I will say that we have the chat option. I've put in the question of describing your three words for your housing situation, as Leah just mentioned. So, please use the chat. We really appreciate the comments and feedback, and we'll be using that as part of our note-taking and public comments from this workshop. And then also, if you'd prefer to have a verbal comment, we ask that you raise your hand first before unmuting yourself. So, you can go to the reactions on the, like, further down to the right-hand side of your screen, the reactions, and then raise hand. And if at any point in time that you need to leave this presentation, there is the end button to be able to leave. So, if you have any questions, please feel free to send a chat or to raise your hand if you're having any problems. We're, we're here to help, and we really appreciate your participation and comments in today's meeting. With that, I'm going to launch the first poll. And so, this is just a series of five questions. We're trying to understand better who's in the audience today, including how long you've lived in Hayward, whether you rent or own your residence, and just some details about your, your housing situation. So, comments for the chat and also the polling is really helpful to us. So, we appreciate your participation.
I think we'll give people a couple of minutes to, to finish that, before we end the poll.
Sounds great. So, we have a little less than half participating in the poll right now. So, give it a little bit more time and hope that you'll participate. So far, we've seen that most meeting participants have lived in Hayward for more than 10 years. We do have a few attendees who do not live in Hayward, so that's interesting. Majority own their residence. And majority see themselves living in their home the next five years. And there is a split on whether attendees need assistance in meeting their housing goals. And there is a range of locations for where each of you is located. So, we'll give it just, we can give it just another moment, but we'll, we'll close this poll here soon. Because I haven't received, sorry, I received a couple more responses. That's my right.
People can always add in the chat later.
Mm-hmm. Sounds great. So, I'm going to end the poll now. Thank you for your participation. All right.
There we go. Okay, back to the presentation. So, what is a housing element and why are we doing this right now? I think it's worth just spending a few minutes just talking about housing elements in general, what they are, so that we can lay a good groundwork for people understanding what this project is about. So, it's a statutorily required element of the city's general plan. And statutorily required means that state law requires every local jurisdiction prepare a housing element. The general plan, which every local jurisdiction is required to have, is a guiding policy document for the development within the city. Unlike other elements of the general plan, the housing element must be updated every eight years. It's also the only general plan amendment that's approved by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. The eight-year cycle coincides with the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA for short. That's basically the total number of housing units that each local jurisdiction, counties, and cities must build to accommodate existing and future housing needs. Every jurisdiction has provided this regional housing need allocation, which is handed down from the state to eat, to regional councils of governments, and then handed down from those regional councils of governments. In our case, that's ABA or the Association of Area Governments to local jurisdictions. So, in this eight-year cycle, the city of Hayward must demonstrate the capacity to build 4,624 new housing units that are split among various income categories, as you can see on the slide. So, for reference, when we're talking about income categories, we're basing it around what's called the area median income, or AMI. For Alameda County, each county has its own AMI. In 2022, the AMI for a family of four in Alameda County was $142,800. So, you can see that at the top left of the slide. Moderate income tiers off of that. And what that is, is it's between 80% and 120% of that number. Low income is between 50% and 80% of that number. Very low income is 30 to 50% of that number, and extremely low income is less than 30% of the AMI. When calculating affordable rents, the assumption is that an individual or a family is paying no more than 30% of their monthly income on housing and utilities. So, for a moderate-income household of four that's making 100% of the AMI, or 142,800, their monthly rent in mortgage or mortgage plus utilities shouldn't exceed $3,570 roughly. If they're paying more than that, more than 30% of their income, then that would, they would be considered rent burdened. So, why do we need a housing element is, you know, it's also a good question. So, we can see why we're doing it. The state requires it. You know, the state requires it. Noncompliance with housing element law could make Hayward ineligible for grants, for transportation funding, for affordable housing funding, and then it would also make us vulnerable to lawsuits. And just in general and more philosophically, a housing element provides an opportunity for conversations around how, where, and what types of housing the community wants and needs. And so, it's essential to remember that, you know, we are having these conversations. We are collecting three words. We're trying to connect with the community. But the city is not responsible for building the 4,624 housing units that are our regional allocation. What the city is responsible for doing through the housing element is demonstrating that Hayward has appropriately zoned sites to allow for the development of those housing units. And that development primarily will come through market, through the market and private developers. So, state law is very, very specific about what kind of components should comprise a housing element. And these little buckets are sort of shown on this screen in front of you. Starting from the left, we have public participation. So, we're looking at, you know, what kind of public participation each jurisdiction does. HCD examines that. The housing element has to contain a housing needs summary. That's an appendix, I think it was appendix B in our, in our housing element. A housing constraint summary, resources and inventory, which shows your RENA allocation and the sites where we could accommodate those housing units, a fair housing assessment, which analyzes contributing factors to unfair housing, and then sets forth goals and priorities around fair housing, and then a housing plan, which pulls everything together and looks at resources, objectives, programs, actions, and then overall goals for the housing element. So, briefly, I'm going to touch on the public participation. City staff and the consultant worked diligently to get out into the community and to meet people where they were in order to provide opportunities about the housing element. Here's just a description of some of the things that we did. We created a bilingual gallery walk with these like posters that covered the whole project, housing element, history of Hayward, and then the other parts of the project, the climate action plan, and environmental justice element, posted them at City Hall, the library, art, and then took them to various community meetings and events. We had a robust project website with links to videos about the history of Hayward, about redlining, about, you know, different housing laws, and then even things like related to calculating your carbon footprint. We really tried to put a lot of interactive elements on the website to make it an educational tool. We had social media campaigns. We mailed bilingual flyers to all households in Hayward. We attended numerous community meetings and focus groups. We had a survey run earlier in the year. We did a housing site simulation. We've had community workshops and work sessions with decision makers. And then we partnered with Chabot, a couple of professors at Chabot, whose students interviewed over 350 individuals about their housing needs and issues. And we use that to, you know, sort of give our housing element a really human aspect through integrating quotes and ideas, and really just getting to know the community that they, that they interviewed. And with that, I'm going to hand the presentation over to Jason Montague, who's going to present on a few of the other components of the housing element.
Thank you. Yeah. How's my volume? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, I'll be talking about a few of the different components of the housing element. So, the first component that we'll be talking about is the housing needs assessment, which is a detailed analysis of Hayward's existing and future housing needs. So, these housing needs factor into the site selection process and creation of the how, the housing goals, policies, and programs. So, we'll briefly discuss a few of the major points of housing need in Hayward. And for reference, the, the full housing needs assessment is appendix B of the draft housing element that's posted on the city website. Next slide, please. Leah, are you on control of the slides?
I think so. It's not moving. Hold on one moment. Let me just relaunch it and see what's happening. Oh, it just forwarded. Hold on one moment. Let me relaunch. My computer might just be overloading.
Okay, yep, there we go. So, Hayward's population has grown by about 44% in the last 30 years. In this time, Hayward has experienced a lot of diversity in its population, and it consists of high percentages of Hispanic, Asian, and white residents. The population is also progressively getting older. As the median age in Hayward has increased from 31 years old in 2000 to 35 years old in 2019. Employment trends are also changing, as Hayward is seeing a decrease in manufacturing jobs and an increase in jobs in industries such as education and health services. Next slide, please. So, housing affordability is an identified issue in Hayward. So, it's shown as on the bar graph on the left side. High percentages of extremely low, very low, and low-income households experience cost burden, which means they spend more than 30% of their monthly income on housing. Nearly half of all renters in Hayward also experience cost burden, and 30% of owners experience cost burden in the city. And then by race, around half of Black or African-American and Hispanic or Latinx residents experience housing cost burden as well. Next slide, please. So, between 2000 and 2019, the population of Hayward has grown by approximately 18%, but the housing stock has only grown by approximately 9%. Hayward has also seen an increase of single-person households and decline of households with, married with children in the last 10 years. The housing stock is also getting older, with approximately 67% of Hayward's housing stock being over 30 years old, which means that those, that housing stock is likely to be in need of rehabilitation. And then for reference, on the graph, the green portion represents the renter-occupied units, and the blue portion represents owner-occupied units of the housing units by year built. Next slide, please. So, housing constraints is the next component that, in the housing element, and it includes an analysis of constraints that could potentially hinder the development of housing. So, Hayward's housing element includes a number of goals, policies, and programs that are intended to mitigate or remove constraints that have been identified through this housing constraints analysis. So, the constraints analysis can be found, it is appendix D of the published housing element. Next slide, please. So, there are three main types of housing constraints to residential development. Governmental constraints include zoning and building code requirements that could potentially restrict housing to only be allowed in certain areas or at certain development standards. Other governmental constraints include required project improvements and environmental impact report process, which could potentially increase the amount of time and money associated with completing a project. And market constraints include of costs associated with the project impact fees, land costs, construction costs, and as well as the complexities of financing the project. And then environmental constraints include things like water supply and drought, fault zones, fire hazards, flood hazards, and resource conservation, such as biological habitats that could potentially limit residential development in certain areas of the city. Next slide, please. So, the next component is the resources and inventory, which describes how the housing element will accommodate its regional housing needs association, or RENA. The housing resources section is appendix C of the published housing element. Next slide. So, this slide shows how Hayward intends to meet its RENA requirement. So, units will be accommodated through projects that are currently in the pipeline, meaning they're either planned or approved right now. Anticipated accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, that can be assumed throughout the, the planning period. And then a number of sites that were identified in the downtown specific plan area, the Mission Boulevard corridor and the former Route 238 corridor. So, the table also shows how many of these units are on sites that are currently vacant, meaning there's nothing there, or sites that are currently non-vacant, but are you, but underutilized. You can see that there's a surplus of units for each income category. That's the bottom row. Hayward's regional housing needs allocation can be accommodated through the, the existing zoning that it has now, and no rezones would be required to, to meet Hayward's RENA allocation. Next slide, please. So, the sites were select, the non-vacant sites were selected through a number of ways. The inventory primarily identified sites in areas near existing transit and in proximity to commercial amenities within the downtown specific plan and the Mission Boulevard corridor. Site, specific sites were vetted to meet HCD's size and allowable density requirement for lower-income sites. So, the, the density requirement is a zoning that allows for at least 30 units per acre and a parcel that is at least half an acre and 10 acres for, so that's the requirement for lower-income sites. The inventory identifies vacant sites in these areas and underutilized, underutilized sites with a high likelihood of redevelopment within the next eight years. So, some of these have existing uses as, such as parking lots, warehouses, some single-tenant retail, and old automobile dealerships. No sites that are currently being used for residential purposes are included in the inventory to avoid displacement of current residences, residents. And all identified sites have existing zoning that allows for high-density residential. So, the density range is between 35 units per acre and 110 units per acre on, based on the zone on these sites. And again, this is all, this is in much more detail, an appendix C of the, of the draft. Next slide, please. So, this figure shows the location of residential projects in Hayward that are been approved or pending. These projects are expected to be built and occupied during the life of this housing element. So, that means that these units can count towards accommodating a portion of Hayward's arena. As you can see, the major, the majority of residential developments are occurring within boundaries of the Mission Boulevard code and the downtown specific plan, and then as well as the, the former Route 238 corridor. Next slide, please. And this figure shows the sites that were selected as part of the sites inventory. The majority of units are located in the downtown specific plan and Mission Boulevard corridor and are generally located in areas that are experiencing the most residential development in the city. So, based on the site selection criteria, such as existing uses and redevelopment potential, the city has determined that these sites have a high potential of developing with residential units. Next slide, please. And the next component is the fair housing assessment, which provides an assessment of numerous fair housing indicators, such as housing cost burden, concentrated areas of poverty, concentrated areas of segregation, concentrated areas of affluence, as well as homelessness, substandard housing, and access to good education, good jobs, and a healthy environment. And the assessment of fair housing is appendix F of the housing element. Next slide, please. So, the assessment of fair housing identifies certain factors that contribute to fair housing in Hayward. Some of these factors include exclusionary governmental policy, discriminatory lending, concentrations of poverty, race, and ethnic, and segregation. The housing element also includes goals, policies, and programs that are specifically intended to address the factors that were identified in Hayward. The fair housing assessment also analyzes the potential fair housing implications of the sites inventory, including if a development on, if development on the sites that were selected would improve or exacerbate existing fair housing issues, if the inventory is creating or worsening poverty or affluent areas, if the sites would displace existing residents, and how the sites would affect access to opportunities in the specific areas, such as good schools and jobs. Next slide, please. One of the tools used in the assessment of fair housing is an opportunity map, which was created by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee and HCD. So, this, this opportunity map assigns resource level to each census tract based on the tract's access to good education, good economic outcomes, and a healthy environment. So, as you can see on the map, most of Hayward is low resource, that light green. So, meaning that those areas have low access to these resources. And there are pockets of moderate resource areas, specifically in the hills, and then one kind of in the middle of the city there. So, most of Mission Boulevard code area and the downtown specific plan are located in low-resource areas. Next slide, please. So, this figure shows the pending projects and the inventory sites in comparison to Hayward's resource level. So, as you can see, most of the sites and the projects are located in low-resource areas, which, which covers most of the city. And although these sites are located in low-resource areas, these sites were chosen as the best locations for sites because they have adequate zoning and density for high-density residential project, projects. They have high access to transit and commercial amenities, and these sites would avoid displacing current Hayward residents. There are also a number of programs that are included in housing elements to provide specific fair housing services in these areas. And then to avoid any concentration of poverty or affluence, the sites were distributed throughout the city to mirror Hayward's current development history. So, as you can see, the pipeline projects are, are similar to the sites that were selected. So, it is expected that these sites will be developed with both residential and commercial uses, which would work towards improving the, the areas that they're in, in the downtown area and the Mission Boulevard corridor. Next slide.
Jason, there is a question in the chat about if we could clarify more for site number 14 up in the hills.
Okay. I think I have, I think I can do that quickly. I have the wrong spreadsheet open.
I can, I can jump in here, Jason, if you'd like. So, that is a subdivision that was approved. The, the little projects that are in circles are approved projects that haven't been built yet. So, that project is an approved project. We expect it to be constructed in the next eight years. And that's just, it's a new 50-lot subdivision up in the hills. It's called Cavalo Highlands. Are there any other questions about it?
Seeing no raised hands or no additional chat, so I think we're good to go. Thank you.
And then I can answer additional questions about sites and projects that are pending. I did want to jump into this and just say one thing. Um, we do expect, and this is reflected in the action plan, and we've mentioned this in other presentations, that through updated state laws, like accessory dwelling unit law and Senate Bill 9, which allows every single-family lot to be split into two and have duplexes built on each lot, we do expect to see properties in the hills. properties in the hills and those existing single-family neighborhoods start to become slightly more dense. You won't see, you know, large-scale multifamily developments there, but you will just see a general densification. And, you know, lot, lots of new units occurring in existing single-family neighborhoods and some of those moderate resource areas. The reason why we're not counting those is because this is new state laws. Senate Bill nine just came into effect on January first of this year. And so we don't know what's going to happen with that, but we have had a tremendous amount of interest, the Planning Permit Center, ask of people asking questions about it. So I I do think in the next eight years, we that will be a trend that we'll see. Looks like we're stuck again. Hold on one sec. So I think the presentation's coming back to me on the housing plan. Here we go. And so this is the last component of the housing element, the housing plan, and it specifies policies and programs to be carried out during this eight-year cycle to fulfill housing needs, address constraints, and to achieve some of the goals that we've identified. The housing plan contains goals, policies, actions, objectives, and timeframes. And importantly, it sets forth the responsible agency and the funding source for achieving the specific actions. There are six areas that include, they're basically goals that include specific actions. And these areas are to preserve, conserve, and improve existing housing stock, to assist in the development of affordable housing, to provide adequate sites for new housing, to remove constraints on development, to provide housing for persons with special needs, and then provide equal opportunity, equal housing opportunities for all persons. So in the topic of preserve, conserve, and improve existing housing, we have really specific actions, including a minor home repair program that provides grants to people wanting to improve their how their homes, a residential rental inspection program to ensure that housing, that housing problems are addressed, and then preservation of at-risk affordable housing. And that's housing that is was probably funded through tax credit or other affordable housing funds that are coming, that are expiring during this next eight-year cycle. So the question is, what kind of programs and can we implement to try to preserve that housing? The next area is to assist in the development of affordable housing. So we listed sort of a variety of opportunities for affordable housing developers to come in and receive assistance from staff, updating our density bonus and affordable inclusionary housing ordinance, which just kicked off. The density bonus we expect to be updated later this year, and the affordable housing ordinance kicked off last month. And then working with the county on increasing housing choice vouchers for Hayward residents. On the topic of ensuring that we have adequate housing sites to meet our regional housing need allocation, we have actions to monitor and make sure we don't have any loss of zoning for redevelopment of the sites we've identified. Replacement housing requirements. So if housing is demolished, then the those units must be replaced at the affordable levels that they exist by right approvals on specific housing sites that were reused from the last housing element cycle that affects about four four lots. Adaptive reuse policies for commercial buildings that will convert to residential and then allowing a variety of housing types. Removing constraints on housing development, these include, you know, developing incentives for developers through things like our density bonus and affordable housing ordinance, options for lot consolidation, expedited project review, and then monitoring and expanding those state laws, ADU SB nine duplexes and lot split programs to figure out, you know, are they coming in? What are the pinch points for that? And then how can we as Hayward staff ensure that we're that people are able to do these projects in their neighborhoods? The next topic is housing for persons with special needs. Give me a second. Here we go. To keep moving. So that current pre contains a variety of actions, including prioritizing funding for affordable developments that serve special needs populations. And what that might look like is for grants that the city provides using like our housing trust funds. We could add in points for projects that prioritize specific households, like female-headed, large households, individuals with disabilities, individuals experiencing homelessness and other identified special needs populations. Provide continuing to provide financial support to organizations that assist individuals with special needs, developing a shallow rent subsidy program for extremely low-income households to prevent homelessness. So this might be just that extra bit of money for a few months to get people through. And then continued community outreach and education, ensuring that people know that these programs exist and how to access them. Just one recent change here is that we have housing division staff that now sits in the permit center. And they provide, if somebody walks in and says they need help, we know exactly who to go to in the housing division to give that person help right where they are in the permit center. And then the next topic, my computers barely making it is equal housing opportunities for all persons. And that's what Jason just touched on in the last component, the fair housing assessment. And that is new this this cycle. It's a new component. Here we go. So under equal housing opportunities for all persons, it's really important to note that the fair housing plan is threaded throughout all the previous five goals. There's an eye to fair housing and equity through the entire housing element. This section just really specifically talks about a few issues that we identified in the plan as being at the top of the list of issues, which is, you know, making sure there's foreclosure prevention and how counseling for individuals that are facing that issue, fair housing services. So that's, you know, providing legal expertise and assistance, rent stabilization and tenant protections, which have already been implemented, but will continue to be strengthened, tenant relocation assistance, and then updating the consolidated plan to strengthen place-based strategies to expand mobility and supply. So that's, you know, making sure that we provide a variety of housing opportunities that whether it's ownership at affordable levels or expanding large rental units. We're trying to identify where the greatest need is and then trying to target our resources to those areas. So with that, that's sort of the bulk of the presentation. I'm going to hand it back over to Sarah to open it up to a discussion. And we'll just do a quick tech recap, and then we'll come back and talk about timelines and next steps.
Wonderful. Thank you, Leah. So just want to give another reminder on Zoom because this is our opportunity to get more public comment, be able to have more participation. So we just want to make sure that, right, all the resources for you to be able to participate because your comments really do matter to us. We really like to hear your perspective. So once again, you have the opportunity to raise your hand, which you can find in the reaction section. And that allows you to then mute or unmute and turn your video on or off. And then there's always the opportunity for a chat. We're going to incorporate verbal comments by like annotating them as well as saving the chat. So we will move forward with that. I will also share my screen for the Word Cloud that we were able to create from your comments so far. So one second and I'll share my screen. So as you can see, we got a few different words, including sanctuary, spacious, comforting, comfortable, but also have words such as car-dependent, expensive, and the need for affordable housing. So thank you all for participating in that activity, and we are going to Sorry, I'm trying to stop sharing my screen. Okay, it's also doing a resume share or pause share for me. So Okay, perfect. So we will get started with the first question that we have for like our discussion period. But you can also provide more general questions or comments on the housing element or any of the pieces that we discussed. I know we provided a lot of information. So if there's any confusion, please don't hesitate to ask questions. We really do appreciate like the opportunity to clarify because it is very legislative-heavy information when it comes to the housing element. But we wanted to see for the first question of what is your greatest housing need? And that could be anything in terms of affordability for renting, owning. It could be energy improvements to your home. It could be any number of things. So what is your housing need? And it's kind of a follow-up to the polling question asking about like, do you need help to achieve your housing goals? So if you have any housing needs or housing goals that you really had in mind for that polling question, we'd love to hear your perspective. So I see one hand raised. So Drew, if you would like to unmute, you can.
Hi, I wanted to specifically ask in the housing policy, what is there to encourage more rental units? One thing I want to go back to is in the last twelve years, Hayward has added less than five hundred rental units, which is less than the number of rental units on the market that was built before nineteen forty, which is just pitiful. So what is being done to encourage more of that like rental development and help drive down costs for rental units in the city?
I don't know if you've been following, but the LA Times ran an article a few weeks ago that talked about how in the Bay Area, there are multiple projects that have now reached a million dollars per unit construction costs for rental, affordable rental housing. So I think that the biggest issue, and if you've, you know, read the housing element, it's it's the constraints. When you're talking about multi multifamily housing, the labor, the labor and materials costs are enormous. And so anything that we can do to bring down those costs and that includes, you know, reducing the amount of time going through the entitlement process, the number of consultants that developers have to hire, trying to ease and streamline funding processes, those are all things that were identified in our housing element and that we'll do the best we can to to alleviate. However, it's really important to note that a lot of these issues, such as market costs or state funding, pots of money that require, you know, lots and lots of legal assistance are really out of the city's hands. But what we do have control over is zoning, and we allow a lot of high-density residential, and we have some control over how quickly our you know, entitlement process goes. And, you know, we're really trying to streamline that through some of these actions. But your your comment is correct. It's a huge issue.
Felicia, you're still on mute, so I can unmute you really fast.
Hi. Well, thank you for taking us. It's a great presentation. So thirty years ago, I graduated from Cal State Hayward, now is East Bay. Now my girls also graduate from Cal State East Bay. So they had a hard time to pick it back a Jew's question. As a college graduate or college student, they had a hard time to find affordable housing too. So as a parent, so I don't know how to help them out. I definitely, I don't want to be there on on the lease to co-sign for them. I want to encourage them to be independent. But I find it extremely difficult. So I don't know if you have any plans to help out those students because we do have Cal State East Bay and Shaboo College, and those students are struggling too.
Absolutely. I I think that student housing is an identified special needs population. And so, you know, that anyone who comes in and, you know, wants to take advantage of some of those actions, they would, they would, you know, have priority points. The the issue is there's also, you know, individuals experiencing homelessness that are competing for the same money that student housing is competing with. I it's, the need is so great that you're right, that students are a huge, are a population in Hayward that need affordable housing.
That will be our future. I do my best to help them, but it's very difficult because yeah, they had a hard time. Yeah, I I don't think it's a housing, there's no housing provided for Shaboo. So Cal State Hayward, I think they build some more units, still not good enough. Yeah, so I I hope you will include those in your plan and policy.
Yeah, we'll continue to work with Cal State East Bay. They are their own entity. And we can't build housing on their campus. It's kind of like UC Berkeley's running into the same issue. I don't know if you know, but a judge capped their enrollment until they build more housing. So this is not unique to Hayward. It's happening all over the place. And you're right, students are definitely a special needs population. Partnering with the schools is is definitely a goal.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. And then George, I see you also have your hand raised.
Great. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm George Syrup. I'm a Community Services Commissioner for the City of Hayward. I'm also a candidate for Hayward City Council. I was born and raised out here, and I'm currently a renter. And to answer Sarah's question in the chat about my housing need, I I'm, as a renter, I'm looking for flexibility as well. I'm never sure how long I'm going to live in a certain place, and I would like to remain in Hayward, my hometown. And when I encounter what it's like to find other units, you know, they're asking for first and last month's rent, a security deposit, an income of a certain level. Sometimes there's rental fees, and I feel like these are all massive barriers to allowing folks to even apply to rent. I mean, if you think about minimum wage and a rental application fee for even three buildings, you're talking about, you know, multiple days of work for somebody on minimum wage to even be able to apply and potentially be rejected. So I see that as a major barrier and a housing need of mine if I'm looking for another place to live. I know many folks that feel trapped in their current living situation because they might have lost a job because of the pandemic, and now they can't apply somewhere else. And, you know, when you're looking at credit scores or background checks, I'm just, I I'm curious what the city could do around regulating some of those barriers to make it easier for folks to find housing, including fair chance housing. If somebody has a criminal record and their criminal record isn't as severe, should that be a barrier to them being able to rent? And can the city do anything about that? I I that's just an open question. And then my second question is about as we build these units, what are we doing to make sure that the the owners aren't withholding them from the market? It's one thing to build, let's say, five hundred units, but if they feel iffy about the market, they could keep, I I think in Hayward, at least they can keep them off the market. Is it something that the housing element can do, or is it something that council would have to push forward to make a recommendation for something like a vacancy tax per empty residential unit? What flexibility do we have? So sorry, I know I made a lot of comments, but I think these are both ways to address access to these units, but also making sure these units are making it to the market.
That's a good question. That's definitely not an action in our housing limit because it wasn't identified as an issue. I don't think our vacancy rate is very high at all. Jason, do you know off the top of your head in our housing needs appendix what it was?
Regarding vacancy?
Yeah, I feel like
I think there's a number. Yeah, I don't, I didn't.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but we can look into that for sure. And, you know, look at whether that's an appropriate action. Primarily, our actions revolve around issues we've identified in like the in our appendices. So if it wasn't identified as an as an issue, it wouldn't be, that doesn't mean in five years, it's not going to be an issue, right? It's like, I'm just saying, that's probably why it wasn't on our radar. But your comment about credit scores and minimum requirements to move in are is really well accepted and not the only one I've heard, particularly around people who were like formerly incarcerated and making sure that they are identified as as people who need assistance as well. So it's definitely something that's on our radar to maybe So it's definitely something that's on our radar to maybe add in. I want to talk to our housing division staff though about how much control the city has. Because I I just don't know. As far as an ordinance, what we what we can do. Okay. Beyond fair housing law, yeah.
Great, thank you. Jamila Hayes, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. I see that you have your hand raised. If you'd like to unmute and provide a comment, we'd really appreciate it.
That was correct. Thank you. So to answer the question, what's my greatest housing need? I am a resident of Hayward. I was born and raised in Hayward along with my brother Dante Hayes. We were both born down the street at St. Rose Hospital. And we've lived here our entire lives. But the only difference between me and my brother is that he's been homeless in Hayward for about five years now. And he deals with a lot of drug addiction and mental illness. And he has tried attempted time and time again to utilize the facilities that Hayward offers for those who are homeless and drug addicted. And every time he's found them to be inadequate, whether that be because of the requirements of the facility, when they require sobriety, it's just not possible for many Hayward residents, many homeless Hayward residents to achieve that at the moment. And there is not an adequate facility that kind of addresses it from all ends, which would be therapy for mental illness, rehabilitation program for drug addiction and to properly acclimate homeless people back into a living situation that is sustainable. So I was just wondering in that eight year plan, is there anything that has been approved for better treatment and housing for those who are mentally ill addicted and homeless in Hayward?
It's just really hard for you to have grown up with him and see him going through that. So I thank you for sharing that and I'm so sorry. I I will start by saying, yes, there are programs and I'll tell you about them. But I'm going to also say that it's completely inadequate for the need. Particularly, I think in the Bay Area, I really, I've traveled and it seems particularly bad in this in this area. So I will say that the city has what's called a navigation center. And that's a really different model. It's it's a low barrier navigation center, meaning you don't have to be sober to go in there. It doesn't require you to, you know, give up your pets or give up your things. And so I would encourage you to, you know, if you want to help your brother out, to look into the Hayward Navigation Center and see if they have space there for him. They had to cut back the number of beds because of COVID. But it opened in 2019 and it's it's modeled on the navigation centers in San Francisco. So once someone can get into a navigation center or even just get into, you know, I think it's called Everyone Home for Alameda County. If you can get into the continuum of care system, you know, depending on the level of need, you could get placed in a housing first program. And those programs are like, there's just so few of them, but the ideal one would be one that has supportive housing associated with it. And I worked personally on a project that's 125 units of micro housing, 50% of them. So 60 units will be set aside for people formerly homeless, 100% supportive. So it'll have therapeutic services, social services, job training, you know, mental health counselors, social, social workers that would go there and assist those people. But that's 50 units for hundreds and thousands of people that have that need. So and that's going to be located in Hayward on Depot Road. It's under construction right now. The city funded that project through our housing trust fund. We we contributed a lot of money towards that project. And so definitely projects like that will continue to be built. But again, if projects cost a million dollars a unit to build right now, our money just doesn't go as far. But I can tell you that Hayward is definitely like committed to taking that money as far as it'll go and pairing it with state funding and federal funding and county funding bonds to try to get more of those units built. So I do encourage you to look into the Hayward Navigation Center. There's also a hotel annex that opened up. These, the information about this is on the city's website. You can also just email me through the housing element website and I'll give, I'll send it to you and put you in touch with those people. But the the project I was just talking about on Depot Road is at, it's it's at 2595 Depot Road. It's it's really close to residential care facility for people who were experienced Cronin House is on the same property as Cronin House. So but it's your comments are appreciated.
Thank you. What's your email? So I can just get that information.
I'm going to put it in the chat.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And then if I can just touch on that, there are programs and actions in the housing element that do attempt to address homelessness to the extent that the housing element can address homelessness. So for example, there's a program 19, which is housing for special needs populations, which has a couple of actions directly related to that. So a few of them is continue to work with continuum of care and then pursue and allocate community development block grant funds and other funds to support any additional emergency shelters as needed and perform an analysis to see if there's enough beds for the to the adequate beds for the the homeless population. And then a develop and implement a shallow rent subsidy program to provide monthly rental subsidies to extremely low households with prior experience of homelessness to prevent future homelessness and reducing housing cost burden. And just additionally on on those, there are, there are a number. One of the largest priorities of the housing element is development of affordable housing. So there are a lot of of actions in the housing plan that directly relate to that, specifically Goal Two and the associated policies. So it's it's a really big priority through the housing element. So there's a lot of actions that try to try to be meaningful actions to try to deal with that and just develop more affordable housing.
Great. Thank you both for the clarification on that question. I see that Celia, you have your hand raised, George, you have your hand raised, so we'll go through that. I also see there's a couple of comments and questions in the chat. I did want to just let you know that we are like taking out of them. And any questions, I will continue to ask them. So one question that we have in the chat is, is there transitional housing in your housing element? So since it seems really late, I wanted to ask that question.
So our zoning ordinance allows for transitional housing and supportive housing. So if someone opted to live in like a sober living environment, it doesn't have to be licensed by the state. It could just be individuals living together. You, you know, and and if there are six or fewer individuals living together, then it's allowed by right in any residential unit. If there are seven or more individuals that are living together in a in a transitional housing or supportive housing environment, whether it's licensed by the state or not, we do require an administrative or a conditional use permit. Because the the idea is that six or fewer could feel like something that is, you know, in a neighborhood, whereas seven or more becomes like a much larger group of people and could cause a nuisance from just traffic or like noise standpoints. And so it's it would be allowed just with a use permit, but six or fewer is allowed by right.
Great, thank you. I'll continue monitoring the chat, George, since you have your hand raised, would you like to unmute and provide comment?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on some of the previous speaker's comments. I believe in the mayor's most recent state of the city address at the library, she spoke about the St. Regis Building potentially being rehabilitated into units that would be supervised for folks struggling with substance use disorders and also experiencing homelessness. And so I was wondering if any of that was factored into this or if it's too early for that to be incorporated in the in the housing plan. And then my second question was about the use of hotels as transitional housing. I know recently Hayward passed an ordinance to increase the sales tax on hotel rooms. I was curious, you know, when we talk about a shallow rent subsidy, is it also possible for the city to waive something like a sales tax for folks experiencing homelessness to increase the supply of transitional housing through hotel rooms or motel rooms? And is that part of the plan?
Weaving taxes that were established by the city council is not included in the plan. It's it's not something that we looked into. And you're right, the transient occupancy tax was, I think, increased in 2019. It was prior to COVID. I know that. The St. Regis Building, I, you know, that is probably a project that our community services and housing division are working on. I primarily am planning will work on things like new development or use permits. And so if that's a project, you know, it is supportive of the housing element, but it's not something that is, we would count as an affordable unit in the housing element unless those were deed restricted and permanently available for those individuals. If it's something like a two year pilot program, we don't count that. That just becomes something that is a pilot program and hopefully helps people. But it wouldn't be something that we would count toward our arena unless it's permanent.
Okay, got it. And I'm sorry if these questions feel a little off base. I'm trying to understand the scope of the the housing element and what you're able to accomplish with it. And when I mentioned the the taxing on hotels, that was just one example as opposed to like a shallow rent subsidy, like are there ways we can look into creating incentives or programs to to introduce hotel units as housing supply for transitional housing?
We have done that. That was the second navigation center was a conversion of a hotel. Because at our navigation center, we had to reduce the number of beds because of COVID. And I know that a second navigation center was opened up at a hotel. The state was giving local jurisdictions funds to to do that. But again, that is would be an ongoing program that we would continue and expand if it's successful through the housing element. But this planning department is not. We don't oversee that program that would be, you know, handled by community services or the homeless coordinator in the city. But it's definitely on people's radar. And if there's money out there, trust me, our staff is going after it. Our staff is going after that money and trying to make it and bring it to Hayward.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And before I forget, thank you to staff and Ringcon for the immense work that went into this element.
Yeah, and and just, I think the issue with taxes, just briefly, is it's really hard to say who deserves it, who doesn't. That's just, it would be really difficult, you know, oh, you're more homeless than that person. You know what I mean? It's like, it would just be a really difficult process to waive it. And then I wouldn't hate to put more burdensome paperwork onto individuals who could probably, you know what I mean? So I think that we're trying to create programs that will be like equitable and reach people where they are and like not require additional paperwork. But I think that doing more and communicating it, how we're doing it is is something we should make a goal.
Great, thank you. And then Row, I see that you have your hand raised.
Yes, I do. Wait a minute, I'll unmute. Okay. I just wanted to briefly say that, oh, here we go. Say for George, that I've been following the homelessness task force, which meets once a month. And they have, they can get plenty of money to buy and lease more hotels in the city. And I I testified on that that they shouldn't be doing that. There are many marginal hotels in the city of Hayward that could be long term lease bought and we could put all the homeless that we have in those hotels with wraparound services from nonprofits. And there seems to be some sort of hesitancy on the part of staff and the council to assertively go after those hotels. There are at least seven or eight willing hotel owners that have come forward and said, we are willing to lease or sell our hotel motels to the city for this purpose. But the city is not pursuing that aggressively in their plan. At least it's not written down. So it's more of a study thing, but I don't know what's to study. So anyway, that's to your question, because I've been following this a long time. And then on the housing element, I've been following this, as you know, Leah. And my, it's not, I don't have any particular needs. I am here in gratitude for what I have because I'm a homeowner in Hayward for 30 years. But I don't believe, and I've been advocating this for the last three years, that the city is aggressive enough in terms of requiring developers, requiring, not giving them the choice, but requiring them for every housing development that's built, the developer needs to do a certain percentage of affordable housing. Now, the city of Berkeley is doing it. The city of Oakland is on that path. So that every housing development, all those spaces that we have now that we're housing is going in, developer would be required to put in, if it's rental, I guess the percent right now is 6%. You can correct me if I'm wrong. If it's owned, if it's owner occupied, it's 10% would be affordable housing. So that the choice or the control is not given to the developer. It's giving to the city. The city sets the standard. You want to build in Hayward, you have to put in this percentage of affordable housing in each development. And now it's up to the developer. They don't have to do that. They can choose not to build affordable housing, which can be politically difficult. So of course, we can't depend on them to do that. They put money in an in lieu fund, in lieu fee fund, and that fund is used for a variety of things, some of which are not on the ground units for owner occupied housing. And this owner occupied housing is would be inclusionary housing, which means it would be included in every development. So it would not be a segregated thing. It would be included. If we had done that on the golf course here that was, or the, not the golf course, the bowling alley that was recently built, we'd have some affordable housing there nearby with inclusionary low income units. But instead, we only have market rate housing there because the developer chose not to do affordable housing. Several developments on mission are market rate, no inclusionary housing because the developer decided. So we need the city to say to require developers and that is not our housing.
Thank you for that comment. And I think I mentioned, but I mean, it may have glossed over it. The city did initiate an update to the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which is also the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance last month. It is included in the housing element as an action. And so we'll be investigating and holding, you know, meetings and discussing the sort of aspects of that, of the details of what you're talking about.
That's three years off. I mean, that's three years.
Yeah, I mean, the housing element doesn't accomplish the actions. The housing element just sets forth an eight year plan to accomplish them. So but it is, what you were talking about is included in the housing element. And then just as a quick aside, that project I was just talking about, the On Depot Road was funded through the Housing Trust Fund dollars that were collected from those, some of those developments and two other projects, one that's, I think, 72 units and another that's 60 something units of multifamily rental will also be constructed using Housing Trust Fund dollars from projects that opted to pay in lieu fees rather than include the housing. But I agree with you. I think inclusionary housing is is really important.
Is that a segregated development or is that inclusionary?
It's 100% affordable housing developments. Yeah, they're 100% affordable housing developments.
Okay, Drew, I see your hand raised and Debbie Frederick, you had your hand raised. Do you want to provide a comment or?
You know, thank you, but in the scope of this meeting on the the draft housing element, I I'm going to defer my comment. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that. Drew, since you had your hand raised, would you like to speak?
I would, yes. I want to go back to like.
I would. Yes, I want to go back to like affordable housing and how much of that is going to be rental units versus was the opposite of rental, like owner.
A market.
Yeah. So I really want to hammer, like even like market rate or below market rate could still be unaffordable for a lot of people. Like, I'm looking at the mix right now, a studio, a five-hundred-square-foot studio right now is two-point-five K rental, which is absurd. And all those houses that are being built that are market rate, how many of those are getting bought and then being rented out at absurd rates? It is I say this as an overpaid tech worker living in Hayward. It is hard for me to find housing. Like rental housing and even like just buying a house is like beyond my wildest dreams, to be perfectly honest. And like going back to what you said before, fifty percent of Hayward renters are rent burdens. They pay more than thirty percent of their salary to rent, which is insane. I want to make sure like that has got across, like all this affordable housing seems to be focused on standalone townhomes, condos, whatever. And it seems to be leaving out a lot of rental units, which is like lower-income people, students. I don't know where I'm going with this, but I just want to share my frustration with that.
Yeah, totally. I hear you. I think it's difficult for lots of people to find housing. You know, I I can look into the number of of developments um that are you know, rental and affordable. Um, the three projects that I just mentioned that are being funded through the Housing Trust Fund, uh, the the hundred-and-twenty-five-unit depot road, and then the two others that are like said, an additional hundred-and-forty units combined are all rental, and they're all affordable, but they're affordable to low-income tenants. So you what what worse, what I'm seeing is that there's more units affordable to extremely and very low income tenants. And then there's market rate. And really, it's that moderate income, eighty to a hundred-and-twenty percent, that's not getting built. Um, because when you get up to the hundred-and-twenty percent, you get pretty close to market. So people are like, so developers are opting to just, you know, why, you know, why, why deed restricted? And so it it, I think that that's really where lots of jurisdictions are seeing is that that mid- that middle that's missing in terms of housing development. So it's, your comment is definitely um resonates and is something we've heard again and again.
Yeah, I sort of want to add on to that as an aside. Is there anything being done? Like, there's like rent control ordinances that could be enacted to help drive down the cost and prevent increases. Like, I know a lot of people in my complex had to move out because landlord increased their rent and they couldn't afford it. There's been moving vans outside my complex every day for like last three weeks.
Um, we, there are rent-controlled units in the city of Hayward, but they were all built before um called Costa Hawkins. Um, it's a state law that basically says that if somebody, um, after a certain date, I think it was like nineteen seventy-nine, um, if something was constructed, property owners have the right to set the rate of rent in their units. So all the units that were like, we did, we do have like nine-hundred-and-something units that are rent-controlled, but the newer developments because of state law prohibits that unless we I think it's, it's just like, it's a whole other set of ordinances that we would have to to comply with. And I know Costa Hawkins was on the ballot a few years ago, and it didn't pass, unfortunately. So um, I think, you know, watching those state laws and measures as they come up and and making sure that you're, you know, voting and letting decision-makers know, um, there are jurisdictions, Oakland is one of them, I think Richmond are considering rent control ordinances um right now. Um, so it is definitely something that's out there. Um, but I have not heard of a rent control ordinance in Hayward, other than the one that already exists that covers those older units.
Great, thank you. Row and Frank, I see you both have your hands raised, so we'll have you both be able to comment. And then we will have um the opportunity for a little bit of a conclusion. So I do want to uh leave some time for that. So if we can try and just keep some succinct comments um for wrapping up for the conclusion. Uh, we really do appreciate all of this perspective and comments and questions, including in the chat as well. We're we're annotating that. But Row and then Frank, and then we'll have a conclusion for our presentation.
Okay, as far as rental, uh, again, I want to say that the city could require developers to build, uh, right now, the percentage is six percent of every rental development. And that they build, the six percent be restricted to low, very low, extremely low, moderate income, those four categories. They could do that. They could require, but they don't want to. And when the developer has the choice between doing market rate or low income or very low income, they'd rather put the money in a fund and leave it up to the city. So this is important for the housing element. Are we going to require developers to build affordable housing with every housing development, rental or owner occupied? Or are we going to just leave it up to them like it is now? You see how much is, how much is left now?
Thank you. Thank you for that comment, Row. We 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 under- we have that comment. It's also a project that started about a month ago. And so the ordinance that's being updated and whether or not a developer would have to pay versus have a choice will be determined through that project, not through the housing element. The housing element has a an action to update the Affordable Housing Ordinance. But the actual updating of the Affordable Housing Ordinance is a project, and it will be done. You know, through a process that has multiple public hearings with the commission and council. And I know that you're, you know, aware of that project. And so it's, it is included. Completion of that project is included in the housing element, but that is as far as the housing element goes on this topic.
What Berkeley's doing. They're doing it. They're not studying it. They're doing it. Why don't we just do what they're doing and then study what happened? And have it in play?
Yeah, well, I'll absolutely um communicate your um comments to Christina, who's heading up the Affordable Housing Ordinance update.
But I would just want people at this meeting, I'm 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 glad for this opportunity for discussion. I just want people meeting to know, there's more that the city could do, and there's, instead of doing it, they're studying it.
I think what you'll find is at the end of this project, they will adopt an update to the ordinance. It's not just a study, but there is some study that occurs before recommendations are formed and an ordinance is updated. So stay tuned. I expect that to go forward probably um later this year. There will be some information out there and you'll um be invited to some public meetings on that.
I'm going to put my email on uh chat, and anybody who wants to contact me is welcome to do it. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, Chris- Christina Morales, um Debbie Fredericks is the Housing Division Manager, and her information is on our website.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. Frank, if you'd like to have a chance to speak, that'd be great.
Thank you. I'm I'm concerned about the vacancy record. It seems pretty high. Can we quantify how many people uh don't have a place to live?
Okay, so I think it looks like you looked this up, Jason, and it, the vacancy rate was about four-point-eight percent. And so are are we hearing, Frank, that you think four-point-eight percent is high?
I believe it is very high.
Okay, okay. Um, I really don't know. I'm not a real estate person. I didn't know that. Do you? Jason, um, are there any actions that talk about minimum vacancy rates? I don't remember that in our uh housing element.
Not specifically. I mean, there are programs that, you know, try to bring down rents and stuff like that. It does look like the the optimum vacancy rate um is about three and three to four percent. Um, so it does look like it it is a little high. Um, as far as it relates to um other jurisdictions in Alameda County, it looks like it's pretty comparable with Union City and and much, much lower than Berkeley, much lower than Oakland, and a little bit lower than the county as a whole. But I I don't believe we have any specific actions related to vacancy rates.
Would you quantify the the number of vacancies there are? I I just had a stroke a couple of years ago, so I'm I'm trying to get a handle on how many people, uh how many units are like, can we get them, can we, can we put them in houses?
So for a total for number of units vacant, it looks like it's around a little over two thousand units. And then for for, when you say individuals that need homes, are you referring to the the homeless population or just people that are looking?
What I'm seeing, if I if I think about that's two hundred, a thousand people, twelve thousand people. Uh, let me get the ready. I get, I'm hard with numbers. You said the, there's twenty, there's thirty three, uh give me the number again one time, Jason, please.
Two thousand, Jason?
Two thousand, two thousand units.
So there, there's, how how can we put people, can they put them in housing?
Yeah, so I I think, I mean, it's a very logical comment, Frank. You're saying there's vacant units and there's people that need housing. So why can't we just mandate that those property owners open their houses and apartments up for people that need it?
Thank you. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's, it's, it makes sense. And I you know, I'm I'm with you, man. I I'm definitely not highly more socialist for sure, but
Don't we, don't we do anything?
In a market economy, the city can't step in on people's private property rights and require them to
It's not right. It's not right. There's too many people that that need a places to to sleep. That's not right.
I know. You're right. It's a very logical comment. I agree with you. Our housing element, unfortunately, we just can't, um we we, it's not unfortunate. It's actually illegal. We can't take people's um property and and put other individuals in it unless
Why not? Why not? Why can't we do that? We shouldn't be able to do that.
Attorney's office and ask them to give us their opinion about it.
My, Michael won't give me the answer on that, please. I don't think
I'll ask him. I'll see what he says.
Thank you. And also, uh, what's about going to happen? You know, maybe I can do something for Mark when he becomes the mayor. We can do something about that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Frank. Thank you so much for being here.
Wonderful. Thank you all for your comments and questions. I I know there are a couple of additional questions that we can go into, but I do want to provide the information of like how to provide public comments, because this is part of a public comment period for the housing element. I'll provide the information in the chat because we do realize that there um is a lot to say about housing, a lot of questions and a lot of ideas for how to continue improving the housing situation in Hayward. So we can do a little bit of follow-up, but I I do feel that we should um provide the contact information for the website as well as for public comment period, just so that everyone's able to to take that down if you continue to have food for thought over the next uh few days or next week or so, uh while the public comment period is open, we want to be able to hear your perspectives on the public comment period. So
I'm just, I did want to, Celia asked, does this have similar requirements for affordable housing and where we are? Um, if you look in our, is it, Jason, is it in the Housing Resources Appendix where we talk about the Rena and where we are with regard to where um developing the housing, um, let me see if I can find something really fast. Um, on HCD's website, so the State Department of Housing and Community Development, all of the stuff is available at your fingertips if you if you want to look it up. So the Department of um Housing and Community Development tracks every jurisdiction in the state of California's progress toward their regional housing need allocation. You can go on there and look at where every jurisdiction is. So I want to encourage you to do that, Celia, if you have an interest. Um, and then briefly, I'm going to share my screen to give you um sort of where we are, what the next steps are, timeline. One sec. Bear with me. We have such a good graphic here. Okay. Okay, so can, Sarah, can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Awesome. Okay. Oh, geez, really. Okay, here we go. Um, so again, we started last summer with this project. Where we are right now is summer of twenty twenty-two. We published the draft housing element next. Once that public comment period closes, which is August fourteenth, we um plan to review everybody's comments, including the comments we heard tonight. Update our draft housing element and submit it to HCD um for a ninety-day review. During that time, uh, the city and Rincon will go um conduct environmental review on the project, basically CEQA. And then um prepare um updates to the environmental justice element and the safety element to parallel the housing element. We plan to bring back uh the housing element along with those other elements and related environmental analysis in probably winter of twenty twenty-two. For adoption uh prior to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which is the deadline. Um, and it's important to note that community engagement is will be occurring throughout this process. It will happen even during the ninety days when the project is with HCD. And then it will continue into implementation of the housing element over the next eight years. Um, so briefly, um, again, our draft housing element has been published. Um, it's available on the project website. Which is Housing and Climate Hayward Housing and Climate Update dot com. If you just Google like Hayward Housing Element or Hayward Climate Action Plan, you'll get there. It's also linked from our project website. The public review period's going through August fourteenth. So provide your comments in writing ideally to Housing Element Update at Hayward hyphen C A dot gov. And the contact information is on the website as well. With that, I will stop sharing my screen and bring it back to say thank you so much to all of you for coming. We really, really appreciate it. Any last parting words or questions or anything? You can always email me. You have my contact information. You can reach me through the website. We really appreciate you taking the time to come out.
Thank you, and thanks to the community for your comments. Bye, everyone.
Bye, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Bye, thanks, Debbie.
Thank you. There's one last thing for you, Lea, that, Lea, Leah.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Just get in touch with me and I can, I can get, I can get back to you later this week or early next.
Thank you.
Thanks.